An appreciation of the matter of in Kundi and Odis and Vallesy Castle, Imam and Lord of the Road.
Yes, Christian.
Yes, may it please accord, my lords, if I may just start with a potted summary of my submissions. And I have six points. Firstly, the nature of the main housing duty. And under that, I have two points. Firstly, that the main housing duty is unqualified, it's immediate, and it is not capable of being deferred.
Sounds like three points.
Yes, well. And that Mrs Justice Steen was correct to so decide at paragraph 272 of her judgment, Court Bundle, page 143. Secondly.
Sorry, is this the second of your sub-points and the point one?
So this is the first point, the second part of the first point.
One B.
One B, yes, perhaps I should, I'll do that. The duty can only be performed by the securing of suitable accommodation, and is not performed by taking steps to secure accommodation within a reasonable time.
What does securing mean?
Providing.
There and then.
There and then.
Securing equals providing there and then.
That's right. Is that right? I've always thought secure, in this slightly technical statutory sense, means it is up to you to see that a certain state of affairs exists. So it means, I would suggest to you, but then you're right on your construction, that the effect of the word secure is that it is your responsibility to see that it happens. So it's not really provide, I agree, the it is the provision, but that's not what the word secure does.
My lord.
As a matter of technical rather, chancery is drafting to secure that something happens means that you are, it is your obligation that it shall happen.
Yes, my lord, I would accept that. In the context of the homeless scheme, secure means that there is accommodation available at the moment that the homelessness duty crystallises.
We need to be careful with the word accommodation and the full duty. They do need to have the most suitable house immediately on that day. It may be that for a few days, if they had absolutely nothing else, bed and breakfast would be found whilst they got the keys back and deep cleaned the house that they're going in. It may be that they're already in their own home and had Allah Mary been different and need wages, right? It may be they'll still stay there whilst they look for a bigger home and so on. So the accommodation may arguably be different at different stages, not an offer or nothing immediately the moment the letter goes out.
Yes, my lord, I accept that.
You accept that?
I accept that.
So there's a risk whenever counsel trail their submissions, that they could ask questions about them before they've developed them. I'm not personally a great fan of it, but since you are, we will try and keep quiet while you, I know I was the first offender, but let's just hear what the six points are.
My lord, second point then, is that the judge did not err in law in finding the counsel to be in breach of duty. And so two A, is there's no appeal against the finding that the counsel decided in El Kundi, Ross and Ahmed that their accommodation is unsuitable. And two B, there was no assessment or finding as to whether Mr Al Shamiri's accommodation was suitable until the 28th of September 2020, Court Bundle, page 523. And the judge was correct to determine that he did not waive his right to accommodation after the main housing duty was accepted. Point three, the claimants were entitled to the relief awarded. They were entitled to it on the basis that the duty is as the respondents contend and as the judge found. But they would also be entitled to it even if the appellant is right that the duty is to secure suitable accommodation within a reasonable time.
This is the respondent's notice.
Yes, in that a reasonable time has elapsed. Point four, the planned move list is not a lawful means of performing the main housing duty for the reasons the judge gave. It's worth noting three things under this broad heading. Firstly, the grounds of appeal at paragraph six, Court Bundle, page 16, describe the planned move list as a waiting list for persons who required a non-urgent move from their accommodation or because they were yet to be offered accommodation. Four B, the appellants effectively concede in their skeleton that if Mrs Justice Steen was right as to the nature of the duty, then using the PML is not lawful. And I get that from paragraph 51, which is at Court Bundle 31. And four C, for the reasons set out in Mrs Justice Steen's judgment at paragraph 313, Court Bundle 153, the PML fails to meet the main housing duty, even if the counsel has a reasonable time to find accommodation for the reasons that she gave. Point five, then, defunctus point. We would invite the court not to express any view on this argument. It was obiter before Mrs Justice Steen, it remains obiter. But in the event that the court wishes, then we will make some submissions as to how ex parte Sambautin, pardon me, not ex parte, how Sambautin is applicable even in suitability cases. And point six is waiver, and our submission very shortly on that, is that it was a finding openter on the evidence before her that Mr Al Shamiri had not waived his right to suitable accommodation under the main housing duty. My lord, having made those preliminary observations, would it be of assistance if I just very briefly took your lordships to the Act to try and show how the various duties hang together when a person arises homeless?
Well, it's probably for you to decide what you want to do, but it sounds like a good idea as long as you don't tell us things without.
No.
Blindly obvious, but I think structure is always helpful in this way, so by all means, yeah.
My lord, I would try to avoid.
Well, it's rather unwise, actually, I shouldn't have said that, because you never know what's obvious to you, may not be obvious to the judge, so we'll hurry you up if we think we'll take you too slowly.
Thank you. Well, my lord, then, on the statute, first of all, part seven is a safety net. If authority is needed, we find it in the Court of Appeal decision in Arways, tab 38, paragraph 56, page 532. Secondly, part seven addresses the immediate problem of homelessness. Reference for that, Ali and Birmingham City Council, paragraph 15, tab 39.
George, you're just going a little bit fast forward.
My apologies, my lord.
Started with Alvis at paragraph 56, the safety net, and then the immediate problem.
The immediate problem, that's Ali and Birmingham, paragraph 15. It's in the authorities at tab 39, page 54. Secondly, the object and purpose of the main housing duty is that it's a result duty. It's to provide urgent support to the homeless.
Well, hang on, you're mixing up two different points there. Obviously, object and purpose is to provide urgent support to the homeless. But to say it's a result duty is a different point, it's not a preliminary point, that's exactly the issue which you're going to go on to prove.
Yes.
It's really, I should have said, but I was rather clumsily paraphrasing what I thought the words secure meant. I could have said, that is the language used by draftsman when they want to impose an obligation of result. But I think the object and purpose is, what was your phrase? To provide.
Urgent support to the homeless.
Yes.
And, my lord, we say it is a results duty, and the authority for that is Arways in the Court of Appeal.
I'm going to stop you, but the problem with homeless, if you just use the word homeless, if you're not careful, you will think of it literally as the person without a home. And it covers such a multiplicity of situations. Never wise to forget that, but that's just an observation.
My lord, I respectfully agree with you. And of course, I'm going to come on to section 1753, which makes that precise point.
Could I just ask, you've now, I think on three occasions, referred to Arways and Ali. Two stages in the same case. I think at some point we will be assisted by being walked through exactly what the issues were and how they were decided. We weren't taking the Court of Appeal yesterday at all. And I think you wait, you need to say all the best possible tried, or did I mention that? Well, maybe you're about to do that anyway, but if you're not, will you?
Yes, my lord, I intend to do that. So coming then to the Act itself, my lord, it's tab seven, the bundle of authorities. And the starting point, as my lord, Lord Justice Lewis just stated, page 80, is the definition of homeless. And it's absolutely right that one has to be careful as to how one uses the term. Because 175 subsection three, effectively an amendment introduced into the housing, into the homelessness legislative scheme after Pulhoffa, says a purchase shall not be treated as having accommodation unless it is accommodation which it would be reasonable for him to continue to occupy. So you can be homeless in accommodation.
And 177. Is this right? Although the title suggests it might be, as it were, a comprehensive gloss on 1753, is actually simply making two particular points, is that right? It's not, it's not a definition of reasonableness. It is saying, one, the deal with the problem of domestic violence, and two, with the general circumstances prevailing in relation to housing and so on.
Yes.
But that's not, it's not saying these are the factors.
No, no, thank you. But clearly, to be, to satisfy the definition of 1753, the authority is entitled to take into account the general circumstances in its area under 1772.
And it's got to be a reason for any person who resides within, as a member of his family, stepchildren, people they're looking after, biological children, and anyone else who might reasonably expect to reside with him.
Yes.
The Welsh uncle, if we call it, or the Welsh aunt, it's not actually your aunt, but you wouldn't be who's not looking after them.
No, that's right, it's, one looks at the household.
That's why you get quite big numbers sometimes.
Yes, that's right, because you're looking at the household. My lord, if I may just port, just very briefly, until Arways in the Court of Appeal, everyone had proceeded, including this court, had proceeded on the basis that if accommodation was not reasonable for continued occupation, it could never be suitable accommodation. It's a certain thing, as we will see in Arways, Lord Justice Ward described as the narrow point. And it was when Arways went to the House of Lords that Baroness Hale explained that we'd all been wrong, and that it was possible.
So sorry, you say until, until Arways in the Court of Appeal?
Yes.
Do you mean until Arways, or do you mean until Arways in the House of Lords?
Perhaps it might be helpful if I just, if I call Arways, Arways, even though it's called Ali and Birmingham in the law report.
Oh, I see, yes, I see, I don't, I don't mind at all, I've just been using Arways as a shorthand for the Court of Appeal and Ali as a shorthand for the House of Lords.
I should do that. So Arways Court of Appeal, at that point, Mr Justice Collins at first instance, and then the Court of Appeal approached it on the, at that point, what I would submit was the orthodox belief that accommodation, if you didn't get past section 1753, you weren't in the accommodation, and therefore it couldn't be suitable. And in Ali, Baroness Hale said, no, that's not right.
Yeah, sorry, so it was the House of Lords that made the difference, not the Court of Appeal.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
The House of Lords made the difference, they said, no, you can be in accommodation where you are homeless because it is not reasonable for you to continue to occupy it because that question has a temporal aspect to it, so that you're looking to the future as well as to the present. Whereas when you're looking at suitability, as my, it was observed yesterday, it's a binary question. Is this accommodation suitable or not? And you can have accommodation that is suitable for a short period of time whilst more suitable accommodation, it obtained in Baroness Hale's words, she uses the phrase of royalty, more suitable accommodation is found.
Out of curiosity, was what I might call the Hale position argued in the Court of Appeal?
Yes, it was, so it was argued by the local authorities.
Yes, I see. So it wasn't one of those things where you turn up in the House of Lords and after the first 10 minutes, they say, isn't this the answer? Not something anyone's ever thought of before?
No, my lord.
No, no, it's fine, I just wondered.
Well, when you go through Ali in the House of Lords, it might be helpful just to examine whether the two are distinct. Because I had thought that you'll show me the passages that it would be reasonable to occupy in the short term, but that didn't mean you weren't homeless, because it wouldn't be reasonable to occupy in the long term. And on that reading of it, it might be suitable in the short term, albeit not suitable in the longer term. So on one analysis, they're mirror images of each other. But it may be that you're telling me that what is reasonable, the purpose of section 173, is actually different and distinct from section 206. It may be reasonable to occupy it for one month, then you're homeless, but it might be suitable to occupy it for 10 months, because that's the world we live in. So it'd be helpful if you could show whether the two concepts are actually aligned or whether they are separate. And I haven't looked at Arways with enough detail to know the answer to that question, I'm afraid.
Being to look like, I don't want to take you out of your course, but being to look like, wouldn't it be sensible for us to look at the whole sequence of Ali and Arways now?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yes, of course.
Because I think otherwise we're going to be asking these sorts of questions.
Can I just ask this before we embark upon it? Where does suitability first come into part seven?
So suitability comes into part seven under section 206.
So reasonable to continue to occupy comes in under section 175.
That's right.
And suitability?
Under section 206.
And your submission as to what their functions are in those two respects is what?
Simply this, that accommodation which is not reasonable for continued occupation may nonetheless be suitable for the performance of the main housing duty.
Just want, let me just write that down, so.
Do you mean by that suitable for a time?
Suitable for a time, that's right. My lord, I mean.
Can I just ask one follow-up to that? You explained that 1753 came in after, did the, after Pulhoffa, was that just 1753 or the whole of 175?
No, that was just 1753.
No, no, don't worry, it came in after Pulhoffa, was suitable there from the very start?
Suitable.
Can we just have a date for when 1753 came in?
So it came in in 1986, but my lord, I will get you a precise date. It was introduced by the Amendment to the 1985 Act. We have it in our bundle of authorities.
Okay, and what about 206 or its equivalent?
So 206. So the obligation to provide suitable accommodation, that was, my lord.
That may well have been in from the start.
That may. My lord, if I may just have a moment, just. No. No, we don't have all of the housing. My lord, I'd have to, I'd have to certainly, the Housing Act 85 imposed an obligation to provide suitable accommodation. That was in the Act, and we'll get to that section.
Right, right.
Or before.
Yes, surely this, well, historically, this, ignoring at the moment the social security legislation, this came in in 1977.
Yes, so the initial act, the Housing and Homeless Firstens Act, came in, it came in in 1977.
And the main housing duty, subject to the point about is and becomes, has been in that form ever since?
Yes.
So what I would like to know is whether there was an, remind me what, that was section four.
Section four, subsection five.
Was there an equivalent of suitable accommodation in section four or in some section that lost section four?
So in the 77 Act, there was no, the word suitable doesn't appear.
So it came in in 1985?
It came in, it came in in 1986, but it was introduced by the.
Are you sure about that? I'm not saying you're wrong, but I thought, you were telling us that 1753 came in in 1986 by way of amendment to the 1985 Act. Are you also saying the same is true about suitability? Look, if this is a problem, the junior's. I thought we had all this history here, I thought we'd have all this at your fingertips, but anyway, they, those behind you will.
Yes.
Beside you.
Apologies for not being able to.
No, 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 sorry, I didn't mean to be chatty.
Sorry, we've got bits to the 1977 Act and bits to the 1985 Act. We've got section 4.3 and we've got section 6, but we don't have section 5 and we don't have anything else. It might be quite useful just to have 1753 and 1923 in the 77 form and the 86 or whenever, or just those, so we can put them next to each other.
And 206, yes. Okay, right, so, sorry, that all spun off from asking for your, my lord, asking helpfully for your submission about the relationship of not reasonable to live there, to occupy, and suitability, i.e. the relationship of 1753 and 206, and I've got it down, saying you, accommodation which it is not reasonable to occupy, i.e. reference to 1753, may nevertheless be suitable for a time for the purposes of section 206.
Yes. And my lord, I was going to make just one further point on section 206, which is this. You will have seen that section 193 itself, although it is a self-contained section because it tells us how the duty arises, it tells us how the duty may be performed, and it tells us how the duty ceases. The word suitable doesn't appear in section 193. It appears in section 206. And the reason for that is, is that there are a series of accommodation duties in part seven. For example, the 188 duty we were talking about yesterday, the interim duty to accommodate whilst the local authority makes inquiry. And that requirement, that any accommodation secured be suitable, applies to all, all of part seven. Although of course, what is suitable for the short term is going to be necessarily of a lower standard than what is suitable in the mid to long term.
Hang on one second. Now, one might, what you've just said, albeit that what is suitable in the short term might be unsuitable in the long term. One might be tempted, to paraphrase that is, albeit that what is suitable in discharge of the duty under section 188 might be unsuitable in the discharge of the duty under section 193.
Yes.
Well, hang on, but actually, that might be too neat because even within the case of the section 193 duty, I think it's part of your submission, isn't it? That something might be suitable under section 193 in the short term, but not in the long term.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not a, an exact read across from, the distinction between 188 and 193 is not the only circumstances in which you may have to distinguish between long term and short term.
Yes, my lord, that is right. And that is a flexibility built into the Act to. My lord, I very helpfully provided the answers to the suitability question that my lord done. So suitability was introduced by the Housing and Planning Act 1986, section 14. And it came into force on the 7th of January 1987.
So suitability requirement, well, how did it do that? Did it put a section into the 1985 Act? What section did it put into?
It substituted section 65 of the existing Housing Act 1985.
What did the, what did the, what did section, what did the section 65 or the original section 65 say?
Well, that is something that we're trying to.
Well, I think, don't give it to us piecemeal, it's not helpful. If we could have maybe a short note with actually lunchtime or whenever it can be done, with actually copies of the provisions to this stage.
I'm very sorry to postpone the time when you get to the authorities, but I'm just trying to make sure that I've understood what Parliament is meaning when it speaks of not reasonable to occupy and suitable, and whether there is some conceptual difference between those two. And what, what exact functions they're doing. You've given us illustrations of the consequences, but could we just have one more submission on that before we move on?
So, my lord, apologies for not having made it clear.
No, it's me.
I'll try again. Well, my submission is that the concept of reasonable to continue to occupy the concept of reasonable to continue to occupy is a broader concept than suitability. Because when one is looking at reasonable to continue to occupy, one is looking into the future as well as to the present.
Isn't that the wrong way around? Well, I mean. I thought the whole, I thought the way, the way your submissions were going was that suitability also might change over time. Change, but not, not, not just because the premises might change over time, but because there's a temporal aspect, what is suitable in the short term may not be suitable in the long term.
Well, let me, let me, let me try again. So, so I say these are two different concepts. Because one concept, the reasonable to continue to occupy, determines along with some other factors as to whether the main housing duty is owed or not.
Well, the, the problem is, the way that reasonable to continue to occupy has developed is this. If you just looked at Thursday, the second of March, it might be reasonable to continue to occupy it. But if you look at two months hence, it might at that stage not be reasonable to continue to occupy it. But because that is coming, you treat it as not reasonable to occupy for the purposes of dealing with section one seven five three. The separate question, right, is the authority has to do something. What does it have to do? It has to secure that suitable accommodation is available. If the accommodation you've got is actually, in inverted commas, all right at the moment, so that's not the reason why you satisfied section one seven five three, it would be difficult to say that it's not suitable.
Yes.
And to section two O six. So are you saying that it may cease to continue to be reasonable to, cease to be reasonable to continue to occupy it in October, but it might still be suitable?
Well, if I, let me put it this way, uh, respectfully, is it, I submit it doesn't matter. Uh, because what, what matters is what is the duty owed?
Yes, I mean, my, my, my lord's quest, sort of rephrasing his question, was focusing, I think, very much not so much on the meaning, but on the function.
Yes.
And what I found helpful was your observation that one seven five three goes to whether the duty is owed or not. And two O six goes, which you didn't say, but I assumed you were going to say, goes to, uh, what has to be done to satisfy the duty.
Yes, exactly.
That may, that sounds neat, I'm not sure the distinction is as, is as sharp as it seems, but conceptually, as well as the structure of the act is concerned, that is the distinction, is that right?
My lord, that, that, that is a distinction in my submission.
Okay, just write, let me just write that down. I do feel, however, this, it shows the wisdom of going to Ali sooner or later, because these are exactly the questions that Lady Hale was grappling with.
Yes.
But, um, uh, let's, okay, let me just finish writing this down, sorry.
So my lord, if we.
Uh, hang on.
No, that's great. That's very helpful. I'll, I'll, I'll leave lying out there in case anybody wants to pick it up. Whether it's possible to see an instance where one is being satisfied and the other is not, or vice versa. You, the, the concepts are so close in, in ordinary language that we may come when we're looking at the authorities to a case where one is satisfied but the other isn't in a particular section.
My lord.
And that may be illuminated.
Well, that, that is absolutely right, and in fact, in some of the judgments, they seem to be being used interchangeably.
That's why it, it, when we're looking at the language.
Yeah.
I thought it would be useful just to, to try and get under the bonnet of this, to see what the language actually means and whether it has some inherent quality that we need to be aware of, that, you know, may have been taken up or may not have been spotted or in some of the. Anyhow, thank you, I'll now get out of your way.
No, my lord, not at all, it's been very helpful. Um, all, all I would say is that for our part, one seven five three is important to determine what duty is owed and two O six is important to.
Uh, uh, well, the way you put it before, which I think is more helpful, not what duty is owed, but whether the main housing duty is owed or not, isn't that what you said?
Yes, well, whether the main housing duty is owed or not, yes. And then two O six is concerned with how the main housing duty may be performed.
Does one seven five three gloss one eight eight as well?
Yeah. Yes, well, it, it doesn't.
Must do, mustn't it?
It glosses it for, for this reason, because, uh, one seven five three tells us when someone is homeless.
Yeah.
Statute of homeless. And one eight eight tells us when the authority is under a duty to provide interim accommodation when someone may.
For someone who is homeless or threatened with.
Someone may be homeless, not.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it must apply to both, I just wanted to bring that out, yeah.
It's have reason to believe that an applicant may be homeless, it defines homeless.
Yeah.
And in wherever it appears in the various duties.
My lord, I'll then, uh, with your lordship permission, turn to our ways in the Court of Appeal.
Do we need to, do we need to look at it in the judgment of Mr. Justice Collins? Maybe we don't, but, um, if it's all fully quoted, but this is an area Mr. Justice Collins knew a lot about, he said quite a lot about, so.
No, well, my lord, we certainly can, so it's, it's tab thirty seven is the High Court. Starts at page four eight eight, and that is in volume two of the authorities. My lord, if, with your permission, if I may just take the facts from the head note, which is, uh, page four hundred and ninety. So that at H eleven, your lordship, see, there were six claims for judicial review and they were heard together because they raised common issues. And the, and the issue was that the authority operated a policy in respect of any applicant who they decided was homeless because it was not reasonable for him to continue to occupy his current accommodation, the one seven five three. Their, their, uh, policy was that if the main housing duty was owed, they would discharge their duty by making a, an offer under part six, an allocation of accommodation, but pending such an offer, they would leave the applicant homeless at home. And my lord, you'll see at H thirteen, uh, right down the page at four ninety, that there were each of the six cases, the claimant had a large family, consisting of either seven children, they applied to the authority for assistance. H fourteen, in three of the cases, each claimant was a tenant of a flat owned by the authority when he applied as homeless. Uh, the authority accepted that they were homeless because it wasn't reasonable for them to continue to occupy and they were put in ban B under the allocation scheme and they were required to wait where they were.
Those cases were, they were homeless at home.
They were homeless at home.
A, a, and. Well, perhaps that follows, but there was a formal decision that the main, they were under the main housing duty.
Yes. In Abdullah, the claimant was evicted from accommodation rented from a private landlord and a one nine three duty was accepted. And she was provided with accommodation which the authority accepted was unsuitable. So they provide her with accommodation and then they accept it's unsuitable, but they leave her where she is, pending an allocation of accommodation and, and they put her into ban B.
This is Abdullah?
This is, this is Abdullah.
So when they say they leave her where she is, what does that mean? I thought you'd been evicted.
No, so she's evicted.
Yeah.
The authority accept that they owe her a duty.
Yeah.
They provide her with accommodation.
Oh, sorry, yes.
They then accept that that is unsuitable.
Yes, I see, sorry, I didn't read it properly, yeah.
In Omar, the claimant lived in accommodation rented from a private landlord and the authority accepted that that accommodation was not reasonable for continued occupation and so that they owed the main housing duty. And then they made an offer of accommodation to her under part six and she said, no, that's unsuitable. And she sought a review of that decision, but pending that review, she continued to live in, in the accommodation that she said was unsuitable. And in Ali, the authority accepted the main housing duty, offered him accommodation under part six. He said the accommodation is unsuitable. He was unsuccessful in a statute review. He appealed to the county court and the county court found, uh, at that, uh, sorry, at that appeal, the authority conceded that the accommodation was not suitable and that the main housing duty continued to be owed. And again, pending a further offer, they left him in his.
So in fact, all were homeless at home in varying.
In varying.
Different formulation.
Yes. And so the, you, my lord, you'll see at H eighteen, the issues were, could the authority lawfully require the claimants to remain in current and suitable accommodation pending an offer under part six? We don't need to worry about Roman numeral two because the, uh, this case doesn't involve the, the allocation scheme. I'm allowed to.
Is pending an offer mean?
So pending an offer means that you will at some point be made an offer of accommodation under part six.
Waiting for your offer.
You're waiting for your offer, right.
And it will be an offer of a secure tenancy?
Yes.
You'll be a, what we used to call in the old days, a full council housing tenant?
Yes, well, sometimes shorthand, rather inaccurately, it's called permanent accommodation, although it's not because it's a tenancy. My lord, if, uh, unless you wish me to, I won't go into the facts anymore. But in Mr. Justice Collins' judgment, they start at paragraph twenty, which is at the bottom of page five hundred and then they continue. And.
So, sorry, paragraph?
Paragraph twenty.
Yes.
At the bottom of page five hundred. And you'll, you'll see that they then continue for quite some time. All as part of paragraph twenty until it, until it ends at paragraph, at page four hundred and sixteen.
Uh, wait a moment, it starts at five hundred, it can't end at four hundred and sixty.
Sorry, forgive me, um, two wrong page numbers. So it's four sixteen of the law of.
Four sixteen.
Five, five, ten of the.
Yeah.
The.
Doesn't matter which you. Why not use the bundle numbers, easier to see, yeah?
And what Mr. Justice Collins found, if I may just put this short, he said that it was unlawful to leave, uh, the claimants where they were, pending an offer of, uh, suitable accommodation. And we see that at paragraph twenty one, at page five hundred and ten.
So the issue at this stage is section, is suitability, we're not dealing with reasonable to occupy.
No.
Right.
Well, he says at twenty, the homeless at home, their existing accommodation can never be regarded as suitable, even for a short time, since they are only homeless if it's not reasonable to expect them to continue to live there. So he was equating the two tests.
Yes, well, he, yes, he was, he was saying that once you've decided that it's not reasonable for someone to continue to occupy accommodation, you cannot then go on and say, nonetheless, that is suitable accommodation.
Yeah, so, uh.
Because you were ready.
Not sticky to my own formula, but I just want to make sure you, you're not disagreeing. That, that, I could, you could call that equating the two tests, can't you? Or i- i- if not, please explain to me why.
Yes, it is, it is, it is, uh, well, my, my lord, one, uh, way of looking at it, it is equating the two tests. Another way of looking at it is that if, if accommodation at that, at, at the stage of, Mr. Justice Collins' judgment, that if, if accommodation is not to be treated as accommodation unless it's reasonable for continued occupation, how could then that be suitable accommodation? Because the act doesn't allow you to treat it as accommodation.
But the problem is that they were treating continue to occupy as being looked as at, at the date of the hearing, if you like. They weren't saying it's all right for a little bit longer, but not in the future. And that's why the two mirror images, because they would have lost on homeless, they'd have said, you're not homeless yet.
Yes.
You might be in a week's time.
Yes.
Come back then, but at the moment, it is reasonable for you to continue to occupy. And that's why the two are allowing more easily.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's, that's our, our ways in, in the High Court. If I may then turn to the.
Just give me one more second. So there's very little discussion of the principle, is that because he's done it earlier?
Well, my lord, it, the, the, little discussion of the principle, because until it, it was, uh, it was argued in, in the House of Lords with Baroness Hale, everyone approached reasonable to continue to occupy in the sense that we're looking at, is this accommodation reasonable to continue to occupy today?
Yeah.
If it's not reasonable to continue to occupy, it can't be suitable.
Okay, right, so.
Following paragraphs, uh, that put some. Paragraph twenty three, for example. Twenty four contains some discussion of the.
Yes.
Reasoning, do they not?
So, my lord. So. My, it, it does, but it was predicated on there being a breach, but the families may, paragraph twenty three, families may choose to continue living where they are.
Yes, it's rather odd that, um, that I get that, of course. Then, then he says, it must be clear the length of time before proper accommodation is found will be short. Well, if, if, you know, I don't know what he means will be short, uh. The logic of his position. I mean, if the family prefer where they are to a move to temporary accommodation, which is, that's a reference to section one eight eight, is it?
No, because at this stage, my lord, section one, section one eight eight ceases to apply. Section one eight.
Yes, I see, no, no, so, so why is he referring to temporary accommodation?
Stage one, moving to part six accommodation.
Because Awua, which isn't an authority in the bundle of authorities, told us in nineteen ninety six that until that, until Awua, everyone, everyone had proceeded on the basis that to perform the main housing duty, you effectively have to be given a secure tenancy. And Lord Hoffman said, no, that's wrong. There's no requirement to be given a secure tenancy in performance of the main housing duty. It can be satisfied by the provision of temporary accommodation.
And what does temporary accommodation mean?
Well, in, in the, in the way I've just used it, it means accommodation that is not a secure tenancy.
So it's typically a licence?
It can be, it can be a non-secure tenancy, so, uh, in fact, the Housing Act nineteen ninety six, expressly allows for the fact.
Yes.
That you can be given a non-secure tenancy of accommodation from council stock.
I see.
But where Collins' jury may still be wrong arguably is in this sense. The council hasn't favored secure accommodation. They've done so, they've offered non-secure accommodation on the pathway to secure accommodation. If somebody chooses not to take it because they prefer different unsuitable accommodation rather than non-licensed, rather than non-secure accommodation. rather than non-licence, uh, rather than non-secure accommodation, that's a matter for them. The council's duty is to secure it. They can't force people into it.
No.
So you may be wrong on that score. There wasn't a breach. If you give people a proper choice and they're free individuals and they say, well, actually, we can manage her a bit longer and we'd rather it please. But get on with your house hunting. That wouldn't be breach of duty by the council. If it was informed, which it wasn't, let's say, in your case.
Yes, my lord, I, 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 I accept that waiver is, is a relevant concept here, that you can waive your, your, your right.
Well, it, yeah. That might be useful shorthand. It's not really waiver. The analysis, my lord, is putting forward is your duty is to make the property available. And, uh, you satisfy that duty by doing so. If they then don't move into it, you have satisfied your duty. I, I see why you might call that waiver, but it's not really waiver. It's not, it's not taking effect in law as a waiver.
Well, my lord, one nine three would deal with that quite formally because if the, if the council makes an offer of accommodation that it says is suitable and the applicant refuses it, that's one of the ways in which the one nine three duty ceases.
Yeah, but if it's accommodation suitable for a little while.
Yeah.
I, you really have got no rest. We put you in bed and breakfast for six weeks and we'll find something. That would be a way, the discharge isn't all or nothing. You don't discharge it all immediately on the first day. It's got to be discharged over a period and at each stage it has to be suitable. And the question is, is suitable at that stage, really?
Yes.
But it may be more than one property over a period of time.
Yes. My lord, that's right. Um, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to look at one nine three to.
No, well, I think that, that's, that's, we, we're just trying to understand what Mr. Justice Collins said. I, I was just troubled by the idea that he says the length of time before proper will be short. If, if the, um, tenant is put, is ha- prepared to put up with it, it might be long.
It might be, but.
Anyway.
My lord, I, what I understand Mr. Justice Collins to be saying there is, is saying to the local authority, don't try to get people to agree to stay where they are.
Yeah.
For a long period of time.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you've got to appreciate that.
Yes.
If they said, I'll stay where I am, homeless at home, for example, that period of time has to be short. You have to do something.
Okay, thank you. Well, we are looking at twenty-three before we moved on, just because it was the nearest we seem to have to a amplification of what he had said in twenty-one. So you're now taking us to, uh, our ways in the Court of Appeal, is that right?
Yes, that's right, my lord. That's tab thirty-eight. It starts at page five hundred and fourteen. My lord, may I, uh, uh, deal with this in this way? If I may ask your lordship to turn to paragraph thirty-five, which is at the bottom of page five two six. Uh, my lord, you'll see that thirty-five, uh, Lord Justice Ward says, the, uh, hearing, the argument ranged widely. Such questions such as the scope of the main duty, when it arose, what time, if any, was to be afforded to the housing authority to find the accommodation they were to make available before it would be in breach of section one nine three? If in breach, whether any, and if so, what remedy lay for that breach in proceeding for judicial review? Whether such temporary accommodation has to be suitable? And if, as often happens, temporary accommodation is offered as staged accommodation pending the complete performance of the duty, whether there was a continuing breach of the duty until that final offer is made and rejected. So my lord, in, in the, by the time of the court, uh, we got to the Court of Appeal, the, the argument really had reduced to how does one look at section one seven five three and, and suitability? And Lord Justice Ward at paragraph thirty-six said that, um, I thought about all of that, and after having given the matter careful consideration, I've concluded they do not need to be resolved in this appeal and that it would be wise not to expand this judgment by attempting to do so. And three lines below D, he says, it is far better that we can find this appeal to the narrow question Mr. Underwood invites us to decide. Namely, is it a lawful discharge of the council's duty to leave a homeless family in the accommodation they were occupying in circumstances where they were found to be homeless because it would not be reasonable for them to continue to occupy those very, those very premises? Put shortly, can they leave the homeless at home for a temporary period while they hunt for permanent accommodation? And he says at paragraph thirty-seven, I've reached the firm conclusion that the answer to that question is no. The duty arises as soon as the local housing authority is satisfied that the applicant is homeless eligible, has a priority need, and are not satisfied that he became homeless intentionally. Person is not homeless if he has accommodation available for his occupation. And then, if I go over the next sentence, but they are rendered homeless because it would not be reasonable for them to continue to occupy that accommodation. And by virtue of section one seven five three, they are not to be treated as having accommodation. From the moment of the decision that they are homeless, the law treats them as being without accommodation. I E, Lord Justice Ward in his, uh, is saying, my submission, that at, when one seven five three bites, there is no effective distinction between the street homeless and the person who's homeless at home because both are to be treated as being without accommodation.
Yeah.
And my, my lord, if I.
And then for thirty-eight and thirty-nine, really just amplify that points. Um, going back to thirty-five and the list of issues. In your submission, which of his numbered list of issues did that answer?
So that answer.
One and two?
Or five and six?
Yes, my, my lord, it's, um, that there may be some overlapping of the.
Yeah.
Of the issues in the way that.
He didn't think he was answering any of them.
No.
He says at thirty-six, I've concluded that they do not need to be resolved in this appeal.
Yeah.
Um, I, whether they aren't the question he then does answer could be fitted under one of these, some of these headings, which at first sight it looked as though they might. He, that wasn't the way he looked at it.
No.
In particular, the, in question three.
Yes.
He was not, at least, seemed either expressly or implicitly addressing himself to that question.
No, he, 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 he distinctly does not because, as we see Lady Justice Arden said, I do find it necessary to go on and consider that.
Yes.
Well, then I'd say they ought to win. I'm not quite sure how, but they certainly ought to win.
Well, he reframes the questions as to.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, so that's, that's Lord Justice Ward and the rest of the judgments about the allocation scheme.
Yeah. And then Lady Justice Arden, uh, my lord, if I may ask you to turn to paragraph sixty-one, which is page five three three.
Uh, don't we need to start with, with para fifty-three? Because she says she agrees with him with the qualification said out of sixty-one to sixty-six. So she realizes that she's not wholly agreeing with him.
Yes.
But is it fair that she doesn't disagree with anything, he says, but she thinks there's got to be more added in?
Yes.
So where are you taking us to?
Well, I'm taking to paragraph sixty-one, which is at page five three three.
So that's under the heading which we find, uh, between.
At page five three two, the first issue.
B and C.
Yeah. And the local housing, the local authority leave the homeless at home in their homes for a temporary period while it hunts for permanent accommodation. Well, the case developed in this way, because that is what Birmingham were doing. They were leaving the homeless at home, uh, at home whilst they searched for permanent accommodation, and that's what the question, because it is.
So, sorry, I, I, but because we haven't been taken to this before, I, I just want to familiarize myself with what she says before we get to sixty-one.
Yes.
So they're agreed about what duty? And this is now when? And she says between E and F, the duty is to secure that accommodation, meaning by implication, accommodation which it is reasonable for them to occupy. So she again is making the equation with, um, one seven five three.
Yes.
I know you didn't like that formula, but it. Continue to use it. Yes, okay, I'm, I've now caught up. Sixty-one, you want us to take this to?
So, so there, Lady Justice Arden says that in the judgment of Lord Justice Ward, it is unnecessary to deal with any further question as to the time within, uh, the duty under section one nine three two may be performed. I am, however, concerned that another answer to the first issue may be the local authority has an interval of time for finding accommodation that satisfies its duty under section one nine three two, I E, you can't leave the homeless at home in that very same accommodation from where, which is not reasonable for their continued occupation. But nonetheless, you're not in breach of duty until a reasonable time has elapsed.
Which is close to the case here where the appellant says it's a duty within a reasonable time.
Yes. And she says this at paragraph sixty-two. So first of all, she says she considers it is necessary to address the further question. But this is not obiter. This is a necessary part of her judgment. And she said at sixty-two, core duty is not qualified by any expression defining the time within which the duty is to be performed. Moreover, the duty is not qualified by some such word as forthwith. Equally, it is not watered down by some words such as as soon as possible. Nor is the duty expressed in terms of best endeavors or taking reasonable steps. Paragraph sixty-three.
Oh, hmm. All right. Uh, I, I, I'm puzzled by the exact structure of that sentence. I'm not quite sure what she thought the effect of forthwith would have been. Does it mean that it would have been effectively an absolute duty? Because forthwith, or forthwith itself has a range of shades of meaning, but it can mean now.
My lord, the, the best I can do, which may not be very helpful.
No, don't, don't, you, you, you. Sorry, it's just me thinking aloud and not expecting an answer.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Is that, that's in response to her posing a question about time?
Yes, quite. Okay, carry on.
So paragraph sixty-three, she deals with Codona, and she deals with paragraph thirty-eight of Codona, which your lordships were taking to yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, and she says that, um, at sixty-four, so treating paragraph thirty-eight of Lord Justice Arden as being, if it was relevant to duty and, and not to relief, this said, that this would mean that the local authority only had to provide accommodation within a reasonable time. Which said, however, the point did not arise for decision, uh, and is therefore not binding on this court. Moreover, this court was stating propositions suggested by the decided authorities and did not expressly state that they were going no further than, Mr. Justice Collins had done ex parte bagum, the only authority cited on the point now under scrutiny. In all the circumstances, I consider the passage that I've cited neither prevents nor should persuade this court from coming to a different conclusion. She treats Codona as overturn. And then at sixty-five, she says, in my judgment, key point is that one nine three two is expressed in terms of producing a result, namely securing accommodation to be made available. Because the duty is expressed in terms of securing the result and the context is homelessness, which of its nature requires some urgent action, I do not consider there can properly be an implication into the statute that it is sufficient to comply with the duty imposed by section one nine three two within a reasonable time. And then she said, however, I would not, at least without further argument, rule out the possibility that the court may decline to make a mandatory order against a local authority to perform its duty to secure accommodation for an applicant in a case where the local authority is placed in, is what is in effect an impossible situation. But there she deals with relief. But in terms of the duty, she expressly rejects the proposition that the authority has a reasonable time.
Can you, with knowledge of the facts of those cases, explain to us why that further step was necessary to the disposal of the appeal? But why, why was it insufficient in, in, um, her view to deal with the matter on the basis, the agreed basis articulated by Justice Ward? What difference did it make to the outcome of the appeal?
To the actual outcome of the appeal, yes. Um. The, the cases were at, at this stage, uh, that in some cases there'd been finding of, uh, uh, unsuitability. But in some cases, there had been, uh, no finding of unsuitability. I'm trying to. Yeah. Well, we've tried, we've tried to locate the orders that were made in the Court of Appeal and the House of Lords without success.
Just, it made me important to us. I mean, Lady, Lady Justice Arden, we know that was right, but, um, but that's for the moment. Approaches from first principles clearly considered that it was necessary for the decision, but the question that we would need to be satisfied about, um, in considering whether we're bound by any of this.
Yeah.
Um, is whether she was right.
Well, the, the reason she, that, that she said in the judgment that it's necessary is she, is that at the Court of Appeal, it, the point was argued as a pure point of law. And, and, and the, the basic, uh, co- the, the basic factual question for the court to address was, could you leave someone owed the main housing duty in the same accommodation that you had found them to be homeless in? And Lord Justice Ward said, no, you can't. And Lady Justice Arden said, she agrees, you can't, but she, there's a further point she has to address, which is that you can leave them in the accommodation that you have found them to be homeless in because you have a reasonable time to perform the duty.
Yes, exactly. Lord, Lord Justice Ward's ratio depended on, once you find that it's unreasonable to expect them to continue to occupy, it must be unsuitable.
Yes.
And therefore, you haven't satisfied the duty. Uh, and Lady Justice Arden thought that another, another issue before them was, all right, even if that's so, well, you don't have to satisfy the duty straight away. You have a thought. Well, you have a reasonable time before you do so.
Yes.
And she thought that that was one of the issues in the appeal. Uh, and, uh, if you simply left it on Lord Justice Ward's answer, you wouldn't have answered one of the questions available to the, one of, one of the arguments raised by the council. one of the questions available to the, one of, one of the arguments raised by the counsel.
Yes. Because the counsel could say.
It looks like the counsel had, who knows when the counsel had, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, who knows when the counsel pleaded it in its appellant's notice or something, but clearly the point had come up in the course of the hearing, and she thought it required to be answered to dispose of the appeal. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No.
Though in one sense, it's arguably implicit in Lord Justice Ward's conclusion, because if they did have a reasonable period of time before they had to comply with the duty, then by definition, it wouldn't have been unlawful for that reasonable period of time to leave them there.
That's probably true, but she obviously thought it wasn't satisfactory to leave it as implicit, particularly as it's slightly odd, if I'm respectfully saying so. Lord Justice Ward say these points don't arise, and then come to a conclusion which at least engages some of them. As you can tell, I'm slightly on Lady Justice Sarden's side, not necessarily about what she decided, but about whether she had to decide it.
Oh, yes. My, I, I'm very grateful to my friend, Mr Marcus, who points out at paragraph thirty at page five two five. You have there the submissions on behalf of the local authority.
Yes. Yes.
And just below G, he submits a reasonable time must be afforded to the local housing authority to secure that accommodation. And it complains that Mr Justice Collins' judgment that an applicant must be relocated forthwith has a very significant effect on the operation in nineteen ninety six.
He said, there's forthwith being used to mean at once.
At once, yeah.
When Lady Justice Smith agreed with both judgments.
Yes.
Was she agreeing that it didn't have to be decided? Or was she saying really, I agree with the decision of Lord Justice Ward so far as it goes, but I also agree with Lady Justice Sarden that you've got to add the additional point in about the timing, and I agree with her on submission.
My lord.
The latter you said.
I said the latter.
Otherwise it's meaningless.
Yes, and also, it, it's not inconsistent if one reads Lord Justice Ward's decision, his judgment, as effectively implicitly including the time.
So at least two of them expressly say reasonable time is not the answer, and the third may implicitly be saying that.
Yes. And at least two of them say it's necessary to the decision.
To the decisions, so it's ratio.
And Mrs Justice Steen, in her judgment, at paragraph two hundred and twenty six, Core Bundle one two nine, also concluded that this was not obiter.
Okay, well, that's been very helpful, yes, thank you. So now we go to the House of Lords.
We go to the House of Lords. Birmingham City Council and Ali, and also a linked case of Moran and Manchester City Council. So the, in Ali. May, may I deal with it in this way? First of all, if, if I may ask your lordships to turn to paragraph forty two.
Just satisfy my curiosity, why was it argued on two separate occasions?
It was, sorry, it was.
If you see at the beginning, it was argued on January the twenty sixth, then again for two days in April. Pure.
Rather embarrassing.
Pure nosiness.
I was there, I'm trying to.
No, don't, sorry, it's pure nosiness on my part, and I think no more of it. Now, where are you going to take us to?
Your honour, my, my lord, I was going to take you to paragraph forty two, at page five hundred and fifty. Just to make this hopefully fairly short, that the House of Lords reversed the Court of Appeal on the narrow question, as Lord Justice Ward put it. Finding that accommodation could not be reasonable for continued occupation, and yet could still be suitable for performing the main housing duty.
Shall I say that again?
So they found that accommodation could be held to be not reasonable for continued occupation, so you, you meet the seven, one seven five three test, but it could be suitable on a short term basis.
The problem with that is that is overlooking the fact that it's reasonable to continue at the moment, but not reasonable to continue in the long term, and that's enough. And we don't know whether the suitability was reflecting that two-stage approach or not. It's just not clear.
Well, yes, you say, you've taken us to forty two, but you haven't taken us to the reasoning that gets there. Surely we need.
And I can certainly, I can certainly.
Well, don't we need to do that?
Very well, I shall start with the reasoning. So that starts at paragraph thirty four, page five four eight.
Well, hang on, we first of all need to see what the, how they defined the issue. Thirty three, Lady Hale says the first issue for the house is therefore whether a women's refuge. This was about Moran, presumably, that wasn't.
Sorry. Well, I'm being told, thank you, paragraph twenty seven, where the issues are set out.
Yes.
Page five four seven.
Repeat, Mr Justice Collins' paragraph reading.
Yes, I see. So what I was looking at at thirty three was referenced, referable to Moran, but she builds that into her wider definition, wider consideration.
Yes.
Okay.
So paragraph thirty four. In veniture of this issue, does section one seven five three mean that a person is only homeless if she has accommodation, which it, it is not reasonable for her to continue to occupy another night? Or does it mean that she can be homeless if she has accommodation, which is it is not reasonable for her to continue to occupy for as long as she would occupy it if the local authority did not intervene? And Barrett Hale says, the Court of Appeal in the Manchester case, the courts below in the Birmingham case, and perhaps other courts before then, have assumed that the former is the case, that one seven five three is concerned with the reasonableness of present occupation. Obviously, once it is unreasonable for the person to stay there one more night, section one seven five three is met. The person is homeless and cannot be intentionally homeless if she leaves. However, the language suggests that both one seven five three and one nine one one, intentionality of definition, are looking to the future as well as to the present. They do not say which it is reasonable for him to occupy, or which it was reasonable for him to occupy. They both use the words to continue to. That suggests they are looking at occupation over time. This is reinforced by the words would be and would have been. They again, these again suggest an element of looking to the future as well as to the present. They contrast with section one seven seven one, which provides that it is not reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation where there is a risk of violence, the operative word being is. Then in paragraph thirty seven, she says linguistic reasons are reinforced by the policy of the Act. The words defined in one seven five are homeless and threatened with homelessness. The aim is to provide help to people who have lost the home to which they were entitled and where they could be expected to stay. Section one seven five three was introduced for a case like Bulhoff's, who could no doubt have been expected to stay a little while longer in their cramped accommodation, but not the length, not for the length of time they would have had to stay there if the local authority did not intervene. And then paragraph thirty eight, in my submission, it's quite an important paragraph. In the Birmingham case, this interpretation has the advantage, the council can accept that a family is homeless, even though they can get by, actually get by where they are for a little while longer. The council can begin the hunt for more suitable accommodation for them. And my lord, I would emphasise the words more suitable there, because that implicitly must involve the concept that where they are is suitable for them at this moment in time, but the council will begin the search for more suitable accommodation.
Well, it implies more than that, doesn't it? Because suitable is binary. The only way in which you can make sense of that is to say that it is suitable now.
Yes.
But that it will cease to be suitable at some point in the future.
Yes.
And the oddity is, under the old assumption, it would have not arisen if it was reasonable, and it had to be, you can't stay one night more. If you could stay one night more, the duty never arose, and therefore the need to get suitable accommodation never arose. It's once you expand the concept of continuing occupation to mean not that which is the present state of affairs, but that which is to come, that you've got this apparent mismatch between suitability and continuation of occupation. And the question is whether in the period when it would be reasonable to occupy up until it gets too bad, is that the same as being suitable or not? And more than that, if you get to a date in the future at which it's unreasonable to continue to occupy it, does that necessarily mean it's unsuitable?
Well, my lord, I, I would respectfully put it differently.
Ah, right.
In my submission, there is a danger in, in using reasonable to continue to occupy after the main housing duty is accepted. Reasonable to continue to occupy is a relevant test under section seven, one seven five three, for determining whether someone is owed the main housing duty. If they are. I hope my lord doesn't think this is too bold a submission. We leave one seven five three behind, it has done its job. The question then arises, how is the one nine three duty to be performed? That is answered by two hundred and six. It is performed by the securing of suitable accommodation. And what Ali tells us is that suitable doesn't have to be suitable for a long period of time. You can look at suitability in stages, but my, my lord, Lord Justice Lewis is correct, that when the local authority says this is suitable for now, really they should be carrying out some sort of assessment, to say, well, we think this is suitable for them to perform our duty for the next month, or the next two months, or next three months. What shouldn't happen is sort of, the homeless applicant whom the duty is owed is left in a position of uncertainty, where the authority says it's suitable for now, without actually putting any sort of meat, adding a sort of flesh to the bones as to how long it's going to be suitable for.
But that's unrealistic, isn't it? How can you put flesh on the, on the bones? It'll be a moving target, won't it?
Well, it will be.
All it can say is, it's suitable for now, we will, it may, it will become suitable after a time, but it's totally arbitrary for it to say, at the, at the moment it makes that decision, it will become, cease to be suitable after six weeks, or twelve weeks, or eighteen weeks, because who knows?
Well, we know in bed and breakfast accommodation, which is to be used as a last resort, it becomes, meant to be unsuitable after six weeks.
But that's a rule of thumb.
Yes.
Which happens to have been imposed, is it by policy, isn't it?
If there's a statutory instrument.
It's a statutory instrument, well, fine, but sometimes statute, sometimes statute chose, chooses to impose bright lines, fair enough, but statute hasn't imposed a bright line except for anything for bed and breakfast.
My lord, perhaps I, perhaps I was too bold. What I'm, what I would submit is that there has to be some focusing of the authority's mind, perhaps not in as precise a term as I suggested.
Now, it's not, you, you can't just say we'll park.
Yes, that's, my lord, yes.
That's right. Well, I'm sure we'd all agree, you can't just say that, but I thought you were saying that it imposes a duty to say on day one, when it will cease to be suitable.
Well, my lord, it may not be, it may not need to be said with such precision, but if, if, if a local authority is, is going to say it is suitable for now, but it is not suitable in the, in the midterm or, or the long term, I would submit that it would be sensible and logical for it to address its mind as to when roughly, approximately, that period would arrive. Like, I agree, it might be a moving target, the.
So what do you, are you, sorry, are you saying that there has to be a letter to the claimant saying, we regard you as homeless, applying the Ali test? But we regard ourselves as satisfying our duty for the time being, because your property is suitable in the short term?
Yes.
I've got no problem with that, some phrase like the short term or for now, and they could perhaps also say, we are of course doing our best to find property, to use Lady Hale's word, more suitable accommodation, but more accurate, at least, accommodation which will be suitable in the longer term. Are you saying they should say anything more than that? The applicant then knows where they are, but are you saying they should say something else? If so, what?
Well, my lord, perhaps I, I don't need to go that far, that they need to say more, but what I am saying is, is that they can't effectively take a will, just leave them here for now. It's not a question of, as my lord, Lord Justice Peter Jackson said, of just, the thought saying, we're, we're just going to park them here.
It's easy to say that, and, and we all agree about it, but they might write a letter saying, we're not just in a parkage, I want to know what, what actually they should say to the applicant or minute as a decision, I don't, on the whole, if they do the one, they ought to do the other.
Well, my, my lord. They've made a by new decision on suitability. It is suitable today, it allows us to perform our duty. But if they've also concluded that actually it won't allow us to perform our duty in the, in the mid to longer term, they will have reasons for that, and it would be, it would be at the very least helpful for the applicant to know that that is what the authority had decided.
And you say they have reasons for what?
For the reasons for deciding that the accommodation is not suitable in the mid to long, in the mid to long term.
I'm still hung up on two separate problems, and it's probably my fault. The first problem is this, I don't think we can entirely leave out of account the reasonable to continue to occupy and say, well, we've gone there now, that's really a mirror. The point is the duty is there to address homelessness. So given that Barrett Hale has extended the concept of reasonable to continue to occupy, if she thought that for the month of March, if that situation alone was being looked at, the person wouldn't be homeless, because it's perfectly reasonable to continue to occupy for the month of. the person wouldn't be homeless because it's perfectly reasonable to continue to occupy for the month of March. And it wouldn't be until April that she thought the problems arose. I still have some difficulty in thinking it can't be suitable. That there's a need to provide accommodation which is greater than that which is currently being enjoyed and which stops the person being required to occupy unrecently. So I think at the start period, the two must be aligned. Because unless the start period is unreasonable to continue to occupy, it's very difficult to see how we could cease to be suitable. The difficult problem is this. Where you've got to the stage, it just can't go on any longer. They've been there too long now. They can't reasonably be expected to continue to stay there. At that stage, does that automatically answer the problem of, is it still suitable? Or do you say, yes, they are now homeless, but even though they're homeless, this is sufficiently suitable. They've got to live in these cramped, overcrowded conditions, carrying their disabled child upstairs, and they've got to put up with it for another little while. Because that's suitable, given where we are, given all the constraints and so on. And that's what I'm wrestling with. The third problem is, unless local authorities are not careful, they might start using the word suitable, thinking about the end result. Where ultimately would we like this family to go? And inadvertently use the language suitability and not actually, and it's their fault, you would say, it's what's happened here, some people might say, have set out the need to consider suitability at different stages. So those are the three things that I'm bothered about. Period of reasonable to occupy must also be suitable. Query after it ceases to be reasonable to occupy, whether it can still be suitable. And the dangers in the word suitable being used at different stages, but without people realising the meaning. Anyway, I've got that off my chest. Now, if you relax, no, I've said my problems.
No, my lord. My lord, I think it's fair to say, I myself find Ali and Birmingham a difficult judgement to have found it, a difficult judgement to analyse, bearing in mind the complete reversal of the position from the court of opinion. But my answer to your lordship's problem, which I suspect is not going to solve your lordship's problem. But my answer is, and I apologise for simply repeating this, but if I may ask your lordship to turn to page ninety-six, which is section one nine three. This section applies where the local housing authority are satisfied that an applicant is homeless and eligible for assistance. And they are not satisfied that the applicant became homeless intentionally. Yeah, so at the date that those respective constituents exist, this section applies. So the question of whether someone is homeless or not is answered at that point.
But they're homeless, why? Because in future, it will not be reasonable for them to continue to occupy. You can't treat homeless as applying on the first day the problem arises in the light of Baroness Hale's extended meaning of reasonable to occupy.
Is this one way of putting it? The necessary implication of Baroness Hale's extension of the meaning of homeless so that you can still be homeless if it's reasonable for you to occupy the place you're in for a short further time? Because it won't be at the end of that time. It won't be at the end of that time. Must necessarily require the same exercise to be done with the word suitable. Actually, she doesn't really spell that out. But a couple of references she does make to the word suitability suggest that she thought which would make sense. That if you decide that for the short term it is reasonable for them to continue to occupy, it is reasonable also for you to decide that it's, property continues to be suitable. So I had thought the trend of your argument was going to be that Ali broke the link between the test of suitability and the test of reasonableness to occupy. But the more I look at it, the more I think it retained the link. It retained the link in this sense. That if you are in a situation where you are homeless, but it is reasonable for you to continue to occupy the property, it is also a satisfaction for the time being. It is also a satisfaction of the duty. Sorry, I'll start again. The property is also to be regarded as suitable for that period, and the duty is therefore satisfied. Now, that, it's not very clearly spelt out. But I think that is the necessary logic of her reasoning. And would produce a coherent scheme, wouldn't it?
My lord, it may very well produce a coherent scheme. In my submission, it is not an issue that needs to be grappled with. Because on my case, the link between reasonable to continue to occupy and suitability is broken by Ali. So these are two different-
Well, is it broken? See, that's the point. I thought that's what you were going to say. And it seemed to me to be, on my first superficial reading of Ali, a fair characterisation of what happened. But the more I've looked, I'm not sure it is.
May I say, may I say why I say that?
Yeah.
And that is because if one looks at section one nine three, that is where, to get to one nine three, you've got to satisfy the authority that you are homeless.
But that means that it is not reasonable to continue to occupy. And that means either now or in future.
That's right. So once you've got there, assuming you meet the other criteria, the duty crystallises. And then the question is, how is the duty to be performed? So it's the next step.
But it also covers a period of time where you've necessarily possibly thought that it was reasonable. How can it be unsuitable if it's reasonable to continue to occupy for that period?
So my point is that when you get to one nine three, then the question is, the duty can only be performed by the securing of suitable accommodation.
Yeah, but you have done that.
But you've done that because suitability, because it doesn't require you to look into the midterm to the indefinite period. That very same accommodation can be suitable. And one doesn't have to get into whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy or not.
Well, maybe, or maybe, but you're still coming out at the same place as my lord and I are putting you by what seems to me to be more or less the same route.
Well, my lord, I would submit, well, I'm trying not to. Because reasonable to continue, because in my opinion, it can and has led to confusion. These two very separate concepts in the Act. One defines homelessness, one seven five three. One defines what type of accommodation is required to perform the duty.
I'd say they're conceptually, and they do different, conceptually separate. And they do different jobs in the thinking structure of the Act. But it's very odd to think they actually substantively mean anything different.
Well, I can think of a set of circumstances, I'm trying to think of facts. Say you've got a family of three living with a friend. Baroness Hale may say, yeah, you could put up with that. The friends will bear it for a month. They're not going to go on beyond April. Now, then they would be homeless, but it would be reasonable for them to continue to occupy. But would it be suitable? Could they say to the authority, we now want temporary accommodation in the travel lodge? We've tried our friend's patience to the end. Or could they say it's suitable, but they're not then securing accommodation? Because they're in a friend's accommodation, the family doesn't want it, and there is a finding of imminent homelessness, if I can call it that. That may be a situation where you can say, on those facts, the link has broken, and there is a duty to do something, provide a travel lodge. Even though prior to Baroness Hale's extension, they wouldn't even have been homeless.
Yes.
I'm trying to think of ways to test what you're saying. And you would say that is an example, then, is it?
That is an example. Is that an example if we look at? In that situation, the council won't have secured that suitable accommodation provided by them is available, two oh six one A. They won't have secured that he obtained suitable accommodation from some other person. Possibly because they didn't secure it, but maybe that's not a sufficient reason. But the other person says at the end of April, you're going to go. And they won't have given him advice and assistance that will secure the suitable accommodations available from some other person. So I see why my lord's testing it out, but I'm not actually sure that would fit.
Well, they'd have to do something else. They'd have to give them some short-term accommodation once the family said, we don't want to stay with the friends anymore.
Yes.
Because they wouldn't be securing accommodation if they left them with the friends. They wouldn't be securing that they obtain suitable accommodation with some other person because they haven't arranged anything with the friends and the people don't want to stay with the friends. And they wouldn't be giving them advice and assistance, is what you would say, I think.
That is what I would say.
I don't know if that's right or wrong. But the other problem is a different problem. I know you want to separate the two out. But say you've got that scenario. Baroness Hale would say, look, you can stay with the family, you and your friends, for a month, but not beyond. And we'd have known that from the first of April, first of May, Baroness Hale, because she said in her judgment, would have said it's not reasonable to continue to occupy beyond that date. Could a local authority say, it is still suitable? You are homeless, it's not reasonable to continue to occupy it. But given all the pressures on the space and the fact that we can't magic places out of nowhere, that's suitable and indeed it's better than some of the other things we could do to you. Can suitability extend the period of time, if you like, in which people are forced to stay in accommodation that is actually currently unreasonable to stay in?
My lord, yes. That is the effect of Ali, that you can be found to be in accommodation that is not reasonable for your continued occupation. And yet that same accommodation can be suitable for performing the duty.
But once you've reached the outer limit of when it's reasonable to occupy, and it ceases to be reasonable to occupy, although the duty was triggered earlier, the point has come when it's no longer reasonable to occupy. From that date onwards, is it necessarily unsuitable? Or can it be unreasonable to occupy in April, but still suitable and cease to be suitable at some stage way beyond when it's reasonable to occupy?
Well, that's a very difficult question to answer, because of course, I see the point my lord is making. But if one looks at one seven five three and then one nine three one, and the use of the word is homeless there, homeless there tracks back to one seven five three. And therefore you've already made your one seven five three decision. So you're not, I say, you're not looking at reasonable to continue to occupy anymore after that date.
No, but you are looking at suitable.
You're just looking at suitability.
Yeah, I accept that. But why should the answer that you've given on one seven five three, which is you are homeless, but it is reasonable for you to continue for the time being? Sorry, no, no, sorry. That it is, I'll start again. That it is not reasonable for you to continue to live there in the-
Any longer?
Just to be more one, it is very tricky, isn't it? Lady Hale's analysis is that in the kind of case she's thinking of, you are homeless straight away.
Yes.
Because that triggers the duty.
Yes.
But what I was putting to you earlier is that you can satisfy that duty for the same short-term period by a decision that the current property is suitable.
My lord, I would agree with that. And indeed, that's what Ali in Birmingham says.
Well, I think it does. It doesn't really focus on suitability, but it says enough in passing to make clear that was her thinking.
And Baroness Hale, I think it says at one point, and the advantage for that is, the family can get by where they are for a little bit longer.
Yes.
Whilst the local authority makes that. But in my submission, it's critical really to keep the two concepts separate of reasonable to continue to-
Well, all right, you're very keen to say that, and I understand why. Theoretically, you're clearly right. But by agreeing to what you've just agreed, the substantive, the answer to the question, when will it stop being reasonable to continue to live there, ought to be the same as the question, when will the current property cease to be suitable?
My lord, no. Yes, as a matter of English, yes. Straightforward English language, yes. But in terms of how reasonable to continue to occupy is defined by Baroness Hale, there are different answers.
Give me an example of a case where the answer will be different.
Well, let us assume that I'm let's assume I'm living on the fourth floor of a block. There's no lift. And I have some mobility difficulties, but I can just about manage it. But in a month's time, I know that I'm going to have an operation, which I'm going to have a leg amputated. And I know that after that time, I'm not going to be able to get up to the fourth floor. I go and apply as homeless to the authority. If the authority, applying extended one seven five three definition, says, yes, you are homeless. And we owe you a duty. And let's assume that this fourth floor flat is the authority's own flat. But the authority could say, until you have your operation, even though we accept that it's not reasonable for your continued occupation in the extended term, it is still suitable for you. And once you've had your operation, it will not be suitable. And we will provide you with somewhere else.
Well, that's what I was putting to you, wasn't it? So that's not an example of where the answer will be different? One of us isn't understanding the other. It's quite likely to be my-
No, no, my lord, I'm sure it's my fault. My lord, but we are, I suppose we're saying the same thing. But I'm just anxious to attach to a label of suitability once the duty is accepted.
Yeah. I've got no problem with that. That's analytically correct. But I was just seeing whether there would ever be a situation in which the this property is suitable, is this property suitable in the short term question, is different. The answer to that question is different than the question, has it now ceased to be reasonable to occupy the property even in the short term question?
But my lord, my submission is, that's not a question the authority should be asking.
Well, maybe not.
The question for the authority when you make your homeless application is, is this accommodation reasonable for continued occupation?
No, all right.
Okay, my lord, tacit.
Well, I've agreed that analytically, as soon as the duty arises, the analytical focus switches to suitability. And that's really what you want to-
So your submission is that it was in the present cases open to Birmingham, say suitable in the short term. But that was a lawful way of going about it. And then that position could, might be subject to challenge on looking into whether they could possibly reach that conclusion or not. But nevertheless, it was a lawful route. But in fact, it's not what they did.
So they could have done that, my lord, you're absolutely right. And if they'd said this accommodation is suitable, then there would have been a right of statute review, there would have been a right- then there would have been a right of statute review, there would have been a right of statutory appeal in the county court. So Parliament has built in a mechanism for challenging and for suitability.
And they can do that in stages, can they? Because I think part of the problem is they're looking at the end situation. If they said, we think it's suitable now, at least for the next six weeks, you could go and appeal that, went to seek a review and then an appeal.
Yes.
And they've just got to be careful in their letters how they express themselves, is it?
Yes, they, the decision for suitability is a decision for the authority.
But it's not a one-off. At the end of the duty, we know exactly where you're going to be. They can express, as they're not going to be reaching some other duty.
No.
By failing to take the decision, they can say, so far, so good. We'll keep it as it is for a little while or longer because it's okay. Or is it okay enough? Okay-ish?
Yes. They can say, this accommodation is suitable for now to enable us to lawfully perform our duty.
And a pure change, you don't have to, in reconsidering that, see that there's some change of circumstances. The fact that if you've been living under these conditions for a year may regrettable, it might be considered suitable, but 18 months might not be suitable. A mere passage of time can alter the issue of suitability because there comes a point.
Yes.
That certainly seems to be how Lady Hale saw it.
Again, it's so conceptually, but the point is this, as my lords are aware, that suitability, there is a mechanism for challenging in the county court and statute review. But non-performance of duty, that is challenged by a way of judicial review. So where the local authority themselves decide that accommodation is unsuitable, then our case is that they don't then have a reasonable time to find somewhere suitable. They're in breach of duty. Which is immediate.
Yes. I mean, in one view, if you win on this basis, it might be a rather fact-specific case because it's really a case where Birmingham didn't think carefully enough at the time they wrote their letters. There was a route. They could, perhaps, I mean, obviously it'd still be a factual question, but they could. This is just the sort of case, put it that way, that Lady Hale had in mind. So they might well have been able to make a finding that the property was suitable for the time being.
Yes.
Then have reviewed that and appealed it if you liked. But what they however have done is they've sold that pass by agreeing it was unsuitable.
Yes.
And so they may write better letters in the future. You would say that still means you win this case. And it's not an empty victory because it means there will be a route for other people in the same situations, your clients, to go and get a review and go to the county court.
Yes.
Though how realistic that is if we're talking about short-term is another matter, but that's a battle to be fought on another day. Well, we seem very nearly to have got to the, I mean, I think helpfully, frankly, through focusing on Ali, to have got to the core of the issue on ground one. You may want to say something about what Lord Hope and Lord Scott said, or Lord Scott said, agreed with Lord Hope. Though I think we can guess what you're going to say, but perhaps you can say it.
Yes, my lord. Well, I say that Lord Hope was in the minority. That he, Baroness Hale, three of their lordships did not agree with him. Lord Scott did. And my submission is that it's implicit in Baroness Hale's judgment that once you embrace this concept of accommodation that can be suitable for a short period of time, it's implicit in that that there is no delay built in into performing that duty. Otherwise, if accommodation will be suitable for a short period of time, let's say 14 days or a month, and then you build in a further delay, it would sort of render the whole thing meaningless.
Can I just check? We've got a pretty shrewd idea that Lord Hope and Lord Scott thought Lady Justice Hale was wrong. Do the other three not address the issue? Or do they rule in the same way that Lady Justice Arden ruled? Have they left it undecided? Could they're only dealing with the meaning of reasonable to continue to occupy? Or have they also, as a necessary part of their decision?
They, they agree with Baroness Hale.
No, no. Does Baroness Hale agree with Lady Justice Arden is the question?
Well, but Baroness Hale doesn't expressly agree with Lady Justice Arden. My submission is she implicitly agrees with her, but she doesn't disagree with her.
But it wasn't an issue.
On her analysis, it'll never arise with it. Because on her analysis, we're talking about the homeless, what's the phrase, when the ones who have accommodation? The, what's the phrase?
The homeless at home.
That is, she was talking about the homeless at home. So that the moment the duty arises, in a case where her analysis applies, they've discharged it. So she's never any need for a you know, for a reasonable period. It would only, it really arises in street homeless type cases. And I think we're all agreed in street homeless that if you hold up at the housing office at three o'clock in the afternoon and you are clearly street homeless, and they say, we're busy today, come back tomorrow, that we were breach of duty, even if they were really busy and it was, there was really nothing they could do. Perhaps I put it too flippantly. They said, look, we're really sorry, we've got absolutely nothing today, but we have got something for you tomorrow. That would be, that would be a breach.
But does Baroness Hale, is it necessary to her decision? Because she was dealing with whether or not these were homeless, although she does say things in 47 onwards about suitability. Did she have to deal with this? Did she in fact deal with it? Or are you simply saying that there's nothing in her judgment which is inconsistent with Lady Justice Arden? Or that it's implicitly supporting it? Can we have to decide? Because if Baroness Hale has approved Lady Justice Arden and is part of her ratio, then we're bound by it as a short answer?
My lord, I would say that she implicitly agrees with it.
She doesn't mention the words Codona or Arden at any point.
But am I being, I mean, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Am I being, I'm actually sure it is a gift horse. Is it too glib to say, her reasoning, in the case of the homeless at home, the Arden issue never arises?
Well, it would only arise for the homeless at home. Let us say, I have a home.
Yes, okay.
And I've got no roof.
Yes. All right, but in the kind of situation she was considering, which was where it is reasonable for you to continue for a short term.
Yes.
Then the duty is automatically satisfied by letting them stay, stay there.
Yes.
So she simply didn't have to consider on the issue she was considering, on the kind of case she was considering, what would happen if, take your example, on the day after the operation, they said, it would give us another 14 days?
Yes. She is, she looks at the question in a different way to the question, to the way that the Court of Appeal looked at it.
Yeah.
But in terms of, and my lord, I agree, but in terms of whether it, from her judgment, one can extract the proposition that there is a reasonable time to perform the duty, which varies from case to case, so that you could conceivably perform the duty for someone without accommodation by doing nothing, which is where logically the local authorities must end if they're right. But in any case, you have a reasonable time to perform the duty. And what is reasonable is fact-specific. She would, Baroness Hale would judgment is consistent with, there is no, there is no...
Yeah, there's certainly no inconsistency.
No.
But but the question, the form Lady Justice Arden considered it and answered it only arose because of her understanding of how 1753 worked.
Yes.
It could have arisen on the facts of Omar, going back to tab 37.491. Because Omar was the person who was renting accommodation from a private landlord. So the authority has secured nothing. But for whatever reason, it wasn't reasonable for her to continue that accommodation. And you could say on that scenario, did they have a reasonable time within which to find her something? Or did they have to find her something immediately, which at least short-term was suitable? So it could have arisen in Omar, but it looks as if Baroness Hale and the others didn't get into the facts because it's all been resolved on the ground, so to speak.
And the cases were purely argued as points of law.
And purely on the meaning 1753, not 206. So she doesn't, it's not a necessary part of the ruling of Baroness Hale, what 206 means. There's a redictor in there about it, but it's not part of the case.
She's addressing 106. Her answer, her answer to the problem is 1753 by extending what had been understood to mean. But my lord, what I would say is this, that if she, my point very simply is, either she implicitly agrees with Lady Justice Arden in the way that she answered the question. She reframes the question and answers it, but her answer is not inconsistent with Lady Justice Arden's view that there is, you're not allowed a reasonable time. But if she doesn't deal with it, then Lady Justice Arden's decision is not disapproved of.
It's not inconsistent with it. And therefore the question is, when you've got a Court of Appeal decision, which is not inconsistent with the House of Lords, because it's gone off on a different tangent, are we bound by the Court of Appeal on the business that didn't go to the Lords? It's like a point not going to appeal on ground one, but not on ground two. Are we still bound by the decision on ground two?
Have you considered the case of Al Medawi? It's a decision of this court, where Lord Justice Taylor said that a decision of the Court of Appeal on point A was not binding if the case went to the House of Lords and was decided on point B. That seems to be illogical. But it's what Lord Justice Taylor said. I've made disobliging comments about it over in a couple of cases since. But you haven't thought about that. Hopefully, we won't have to look into it. You might want to look at it over lunch. It's in 1990, Appeal Cases has both the Court of Appeals report and the and the oddity I may as well point out is that Al Medawi itself went to the House of Lords and was decided on a different point. And Lord Bridge said, I don't need to say anything about what Lord Justice Taylor said. So whether we are bound by Al Medawi, on Al Medawi's own logic, is itself a question. I think I speak for all three of us to say we would prefer to, unless we are positively bound one way or the other, we would rather reach our own conclusion. It'd be nice then to find that arguably Lady Justice Arden agreed with it if apples are a conclusion, rather than actually treat it as a matter of resumption.
Well, whatever conclusion we reach, somebody's agreed with it somewhere.
Yes, quite. The but is this a fair summary of the position? Your primary submission is that the, although Lady Justice Arden was focusing on 1753, not sorry, Lady Hale was focusing on 1753, in fact, the necessary logic of her reasoning applied to section 1932 and section 206 as well. And she almost says so because she talks about suitability more than once. In which case it's not so much for us of her agreeing with Lady Arden, but reaching, Lady Justice Arden, but reaching the conclusion you want by a different route. But if she, if you're wrong about that, then you would rely on Lady Justice Arden.
Yes, my lord. And my lord, just to to respectfully agree with that, paragraph 64 of Ali in Birmingham, page, starts at the bottom of page 555 of the authorities. And if one goes over the page at 556, it says, we would not agree it is lawful for them to leave families where they are until a house becomes available under the County Allocation Scheme. Present accommodation may become unsuitable long for them. And it's, they're unsuitable, that's what it's driving.
She's just assuming that that follows from what she said before?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Right, well, we've taken a long time on that, but it's been time well spent. Anything more you want to say on effectively ground one, which is the same as your?
Fair point. My lord, I won't, I won't trouble the court by what I say in my, in our skeleton argument. But mainly, we would rely on the submissions that we've made in that skeleton. There is one, if there is any doubt about what is meant by shall and must, and if there's any...
Is there? Well, I didn't hear any Mr. Straker say anything, but that shall means must, wasn't it?
Well, that is my submission.
I don't think Mr. Straker suggested otherwise, and we don't do so yesterday.
Well, then I don't need to deal with that. I'm going to, finally, on then this ground one, if I deal with slattery, if I need to, it's tab 48. So that is the second volume of the bundle of authorities. Starts at page 758. And it is paragraph 38. I think at the end of the judgment, 32, forgive me. It's page 767, paragraph 32. So insofar as Codona has any significance, slattery at 32, in my submission, is they're talking about relief. If I'm wrong on that, and that it is extending into duty, then it's per curiam because it doesn't refer to Lady Justice Arden in our ways. My lord. With your permission, then, if I may move on to the question of breach, which was settled for. And I hope that I can deal with this quite shortly.
Doesn't it really follow on, I think, from what you said, from what we said on your first point?
No.
But if there's some subtlety I'm missing.
No.
You've got to have a decision on suitability. That may involve individual circumstances. You can't have a list by date order. That's it.
No? Yes, that's right. And then the other point on that is even if the duty is as Birmingham say it is, which is a duty to secure suitable accommodation within a reasonable time, our case is that Birmingham has...
Well, this is the respondent's notice point.
This respondent's notice point.
Right, how are you going to deal with that?
Well, my lord, I can... I can say... If one looks at the length of breach in these four cases, so if I... It's... I probably sound in the wrong. So Mr. Sustain dealt with length of breach at paragraph 320 onwards, which is page 155 of the core bundle. And my lord, you will see that for Mr. Elcundy, she found that there was a breach of 15 months, paragraph 320. For Mr. Ahmed, she found there'd been a breach of 16 months, paragraph 322. For Miss Ross, she found that there'd been a breach of seven months, paragraphs 324. And for Mr. Alshimiri, she found there'd been a breach of 18 months, paragraph 330. And my lord, perhaps this is oversimplifying it, but I say that in the light of an emergency scheme to assist the homeless, under no rational conception, can that be a reasonable period of time to perform the duty? Because Birmingham denied they were in breach at any time.
But I understand the 16 months and the 18 months and the seven months. But just as we can't take date order, don't we have to look at other factors? I've forgotten the facts of Miss Ross, how the accommodation worked and so on, because her case involved the disability adaptation. And the others, some were overcrowded. One of them had two children that had disabilities. You know, 18 months with two strapping teenagers is different from 18 months with two disabled children. And we can't just look at the months.
Well, my lord, I would say that... Yes, you can.
Oh, right.
Because because of this is part seven, which requires some form of immediate action. Now, one action that is available to the authority is to say where you are is suitable. And that prevents the breach. But if they say where you are is unsuitable, and they've made that decision, then it is not, on any view, in the context of part seven, in my submission, reasonable to leave people where they are for that length of time.
Well, obviously, anyone could understand that in a broad layman's sense. But suppose, just to test whether we really can take that shortcut view, suppose the figures had been a third in each case. Suppose they'd been five months, five months, two months and three months. Would you be making the same submission?
My lord, I would. So my point of this would be this, that if the duty has a reasonable time built into it for it to be performed, what that reasonable time, where there's already been a finding that accommodation is unsuitable, allowing for the much expanded definition of suitability that Ali provides, then the time that would be required would be the time to make arrangements for a tenancy to be sorted out, for the formalities to be completed, and the person to move into that accommodation.
We've got to remember that the period of time when it's okay to be, there's already been factored in the first part of the equation. They've already used up that time. So you've got to the outer limit of no longer suitable. This shouldn't be happening, it shouldn't be there. And then you're saying on top of that, they're leaving them for another 15 months?
Yes.
So even if it's within a reasonable time... That's how you put it, is it?
That's how I put it. And in reasonable time, I say it cannot be anything more than a very short period of time at this stage, just to arrange the formalities so that the move can take place.
Well, but on this hypothesis, well, surely, we are proceeding on the basis that you've lost and the judge was wrong.
Yes.
And we're proceeding on the basis of Mr. Straker's case, which is that it's simply fairly broad assessment of reasonableness, in which all sorts of factors come into play. And I don't think Mr. Straker would accept that all that does is give him leeway to... I'm not quite sure what you said. Arrange a tenancy, get the key. We're talking about days?
We are. Administrative time. Administrative time. Administrative time, so what about all the other people? Birmingham supposed to ignore them? Well, my lord, that is... Or do they all have to sue? No, so the other... This is the key difference between part six and part seven. Because part seven, part six, forgive me, allows for a scheme of priorities. Yes, but there will be priorities to be considered as between part seven individuals. But the minute that happens, which is why the reasonable time here at point really, in my speech, doesn't work, this is on assumption that it does work. If one does that, then one is effectively setting up a quasi-allocation system, where you're looking at competing needs and deciding who you're going to provide accommodation to first. The conclusion from your submission is that the first person to get into court gets the first house? Well, my lord, otherwise, part seven effectively becomes a watered-down version of part six. Because it starts considering... It turns this immediate duty, which on this argument, there's a reasonable time...
But these are all reasons why you're saying that the judge was right.
Yes.
But I understood the respondent's notice to be on the assumption that the judge was wrong.
Yes.
And I don't think you can get around that by saying that the alternative case, which on that hypothesis the judge should have accepted, wasn't just, "I need a few days administrative." It was, "You have to take your place with an appropriate priority in the queue." And I don't think you're meeting that case by saying it's, "I wouldn't have started here."
My lord, the point is, what is reasonable is not assessed in my submission with reference to other people to whom the homeless...
But that was Mr. Straker's case.
Yeah.
Your respondent's notice on when you come across this situation is really saying, "Well, there's a third case." Okay, the judge was wrong, but in that case, she still shouldn't have accepted Mr. Straker's case. She should have accepted a different type of case, which was that the only reasonable time is administrative time.
Yes. My lord, that is my...
Well, I...
Because the danger otherwise is that one then does set up a different sort of allocation scheme.
But the problem is, you've got 10 houses, you've got 45 people, all of whom, for these purposes, we'll assume are equally deserving.
Yeah.
What do you do?
Well, my lord, the answer to that lies not necessarily in breach, it may lie in relief.
But we don't have the other four to three cases in front of us? But we've got five, we haven't got all the rest in Birmingham.
Your submission is essentially that a reasonable time is not to be assessed, taking account only of the circumstances of the individuals in question. Yes. Because the duty is... I mean, you have to decide whether that is within a reasonable time, what it really means, or whether it's a wider exercise. Because Birmingham may of course respond, saying, "Well, the length of time that's reasonable means that we've got to house various other people who've got far greater difficulties than you have first." Yes. So that's the argument. That's the argument. Yeah. My lord, there's another danger here as well, which is that in each of these cases, there was no actual assessment by Birmingham as to what would amount to a reasonable period in any particular case. What we're doing at this stage is reasoning backwards. What we're saying is that the reasonable time is still not elapsed.
Was the evidence just that it's the list? There was nothing else? Just the list?
Just the list.
What we looked at yesterday, there's no other material evidence?
There's nothing, it was just the list. And as my Lord Justice Lewis has raised that point, it may be relevant to look at the Alshimiri bundle, because we were taken to a statement yesterday of Marcia Bell. My lord.
Are we now getting on to your point about the list?
Well, we're moving on to relief. As my lord just asked me this question, this occurred to me, which is what the list involved. Page 309, this is the third witness statement of Marcia Bell. And it's paragraphs five and four, five and six.
I see, it's the second sentence in paragraph six.
That's right, my lord. It's a simple date order.
There's not a matching exercise other than the date?
Yes. And this evidence is summarized by Mrs. Sustain at the nail of judgment, but that's it.
No, thank you.
My lord, if I may then very briefly address a question of relief. We say that the learned judge directed herself correctly in law on relief, paragraphs 316 to 319.
So this is really only dealing with Mr. Alshimiri, isn't it?
Well...
Yes, Mr. Ahmed was the...
Mr. Ahmed, yes. The challenge isn't the declarations, it's the challenge to the 12 weeks of Mr. Ahmed.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I was wrong to say Alshimiri, but it's just about one case.
Yes, yeah. So we say she directed herself correctly in law, through 16 to 319, core bundle 154 to 155. She... We see at paragraph 329, core bundle 157, that she refused relief in Ross because she said, "The council have been taking all reasonable steps." She granted a declaration, but she refused mandatory. And in the terms of her ordering accommodation to be offered within 12 weeks, the council didn't argue it was impossible for it to do that. And in fact, it made an offer within the 12-week period.
So council didn't argue?
They did not argue.
That impossible?
For them to comply.
To make an offer. At what stage didn't they argue? Was there a separate argument about relief?
Well, I'm just looking at the judgment. Sorry.
Often you have written submissions afterwards, sometimes you have the hearing.
My recollection is, and Mr. Manning will correct me if I'm wrong, that we addressed relief in oral submissions.
In the main hearing.
On the main hearing.
If you won or lost.
Yes.
So they didn't argue at the main hearing that they couldn't do 12 weeks?
No, we see that at paragraph 321, that core bundle page 155. The council does not contend that it would be impossible to comply with a mandatory.
Well, were the magic words 12 weeks mentioned, or... You can't remember now?
My...
Don't worry, I mean, it's not fair to ask you even, really, to be honest. Just hopeful.
Those are my submissions on relief, unless I can be further assistance. If may then address the planned move list again briefly. We say it's not a lawful system for the performance of the duty, or the reasons that we've set out in our skeleton argument. It appears it's difficult to know how it operates. Sorry, I was trying to catch up. My apologies. Your submissions to the judge asked for eight weeks. I'm great. Looking at page 239 of the core bundle. I'm grateful, my lord. Yes. But I think they may have been different in... Page 302, in Mr. Alshimiri's case, we sought accommodation in 12 weeks.
Well, there's Mr. Ahmed that got the injunction.
We got the injunction.
Mr. Elcundy nearly did. Because the judgment refers to Elcundy getting one as Mr. Elcundy getting one as well.
Yes.
But that fell out between then and the making of the order.
That's right, because an offer of accommodation was made. And therefore, we went down a different...
Well... Could I ask one thing?
Yes.
Before we break?
Yes, of course.
Having broken your approach to the list, I just wanted to, going back to the first issue. You remember taking us to 1772, which provides that in telling whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation, the guard may be had to the general circumstances prevailing. Is, you remember that we were discussing a moment ago whether a reasonable period, whether that should be limited to just looking at the individual, or whether reasonableness encompassed a wider assessment of the local authorities? Is your, for this purpose is correct, wish to keep the concept of reasonable to occupy suitability separate? Has that got anything to do with 1772? You're anxious that that shouldn't be read into a later stage in the process, or is that really nothing to do with it?
Look, my lord, it is because to get to the 193 stage, whether a person is homeless or not, the authority is already under 177, at some regard to its local housing conditions. So having done that and decided that nonetheless a person is...
Do you know what this sort of thing leaking into a later stage of the process? That may be one of your reasons for urging us to keep the two conceptually different?
Yes.
It's also, can they take it into account from granting relief for court? There are three stages. There's 1753, there's 206, and there's Armageddon. What does the court do? Then say, well, the reality is there aren't any.
Well, resources, what the decision says is that they could be relevant to relief, but there's a minimum line below which you cannot fall. And once you fall below that minimum line, at that point, resources become irrelevant. Otherwise, it would convert a duty into a best endeavors duty.
What kind of case says resource is relevant to relief, but not if you're below the minimum, which you take to be a finding of suitability?
My lord, it's Saccipima.
Oh, right.
Which is tab 30. And it approved at page 413 of the bundle of authorities. It approved the, it noted on item, it approved the decision of Mrs Collins, Ex-Party Jury Number Three. So, so that's where it's found first to fall. I haven't got it yet. Where on this?
So page 413.
My lord, hopefully it's sidelined in red, darling.
No.
Well, we didn't, our bundles weren't sidelined.
Oh, I do.
It's between...
It's between E and F.
Oh, right.
It's Mr Justice Collins again, but being tacitly, or may I say explicitly, approved.
My lord, it is then, this passage of Saccipima is approved in Codona at page 480 of the bundle at paragraph 37.
I think the point, am I imagining it, or Junior, I'm sure will have it at his fingertips, that Lady Hale, I thought I saw, maybe it was Lady Justice Arden, making the same point about 1772, going back to my lord's question, saying it will already have been taken into account. Can't actually, can't actually now, at the homeless stage, I can't actually find it in Lady Hale, so maybe as I'm remembering it from Lady Justice Arden.
And 37 of Codona doesn't appear to be talking about relief. Sorry, you're getting off on a different...
Sorry, yes, sir.
So my lord, what I would say, at paragraph 37, the approval is of ex parte Saccipima, which approved ex parte jury number three. So, and that, although these are observations being made in Codona, the initial observation in ex party jury number three, which is what is followed through, was in the context of relief.
Can I just say, I found the passage I had in mind. It is in fact in our ways in the Court for PM Lady Justice Arden, the paragraph 60, says, "Reference be made to pressure on a local authority's housing stock. Section 1172 is relevant here, because this enables the authority in certain circumstances to have regard to et cetera, et cetera, but the local authority will have already taken those matters into account for the purpose of assessing the question of reasonableness of the applicant continuing to occupy the accommodation in the process of making his decisions to home business." So, that says what it says. Shall we pause there? You're not going to be much longer, are you? And I think it follows, since you've been very succinct, except for the most important issue, which you looked at very fully, that Mr Straker will likewise be fairly short, which means we'll be ready to go with a man somewhere mid-afternoon, I suspect. So everyone should be ready for that. My lord, I wonder whether I can ask a question about that subsequent case, which is this. I had planned to ask at the end of the day, but because of the potential acceleration of timetable. We had a plan, subject of course to your lordships, that we wouldn't attend for that case, on the basis that, subject to your lordships of course, it's a distinct case being dealt with distinctly. Now, if it is supposed, and that there may come a point when there would be something upon which you would wish to hear from us, then obviously a different consideration obtained. But the view was taken that it might be thought to be a little excessive for the city council to have, so to speak, us all here tomorrow when the position is... Well, I see that, but what tends, court doesn't normally ask people to be present. Parties sometimes like to be present in case something is said in the subsequent case, which bears on the issues in their own case, and which they would want to pop up and say, can we just save five minutes about this or that? I'll talk to my lords. I suspect we won't insist on you being here, but you may, you've got to decide for your own, sometimes they send us to Junior, for example.
Yes, reduced forces might decide.
But I don't, well, I suppose it is possible, this is what I always trust in my lords, that we might actually be in a position where something's come up that we want your views on. But we will tell you our position at two o'clock.
Much obliged, my lord.